Alrighty, everybody, I will call us to order. For our, uh, June twenty first, twenty twenty two meeting of the Lawrence City Council. We'll begin tonight with an invocation led by, uh, our august city councilor, Mr. Johnny Bolt, and we will continue standing forth Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, will you all please stand?
Let us stand. I have a thought again to this, thank you for the service of friends up here for this meeting. Appreciate each one being here for us. It means a lot to our city, for our, for our, for our city. And I think that what we can introduce as we, as our city in the right direction. All the many things that we could ask this part about, play part, but most of all, we want to thank you for for the holiday that we just had, the Labor Day, and then we had the, the, uh, human, human meeting with the, uh, this past weekend. Lord wants that to be what it meant for the people, what it meant to people years ago. And now they would do it now, they would do it now, they would do it today, they would do it today. Again, Lord will praise our country, it always is true. We need new brothers, we need new friends, we believe in the right direction. Every day we've been, we've read and hear about shootings and death, people, young people shooting women. So it's got to come to an end, it has to get on the right track, it's what we do, we stand like this. We're attempting to go through this, what those values to keep. What's better, our no prayer, and those who will fall through it, they will be in our hands. And for those who worship, we feel a holy prayer, we want to praise them.
Amen. I pray that nations be divided, the United States of America, and to a republic for which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, please be seated. Alrighty, um, I will, uh, keep my remarks brief, um, you'll all be happy here. As Counselor Bolt noted in his prayer, we have, um, found ourselves in the middle of, of what my assistant has been calling festival season. Uh, but we seem to have things going on back to back in the city. And this past weekend, we, uh, celebrated the first, um, Juneteenth, uh, celebration in the city. And that was a historic thing for us as a city, um, and, uh, we were well represented by members of the city council there, um, and, uh, both the city council and members of the community worked together on that celebration and, um, I appreciate the work of our city council and their leadership in that effort. Um, one of the things that I particularly was proud of with our celebration is, um, this wasn't just, uh, a celebration of, um, a holiday that is only meaningful to one segment of the community or people who look a particular way. This is, uh, was an opportunity for us as, um, Americans to be grateful for our constitution and freedom that, um, guarantees for every American. And that began in seventeen eighty-eight, but it wasn't fully perfected until eighteen sixty-five, when every American became free. And, uh, it was a joy to, to see, um, our city celebrate that and, and have such a positive focus. Um, something that we should all be proud of as Americans is touching. Today, we mark several, several moments of transition. We mark a, a moment of transition, um, in the roles of our police chief, who has recently been announced, uh, is anticipated to become a U.S. Marshal upon confirmation by the United States Senate. That's a tremendous honor to her, but also to our city and our police department. We mark a time of transition, um, with Chief Bill Hughes, uh, who is retiring, um, from the City of Lawrence Police Department, or excuse me, Fire Department, after serving as chief for the past twenty years, I believe, and a- after working for the city for the past thirty-seven years. Uh, his contribution to the city, um, and his leadership in that department cannot be overstated. And, uh, we look forward to honoring him, um, at the end of the month, when he officially retires. Um, we mark a moment of transition, uh, tonight, um, in the position of our, our city attorney. And we will recognize Mr. Thompson shortly, but, uh, that, that position has been ably filled, um, for the past thirty years, and we can't thank him enough. And from a facility standpoint, we have a splash pad under construction now. We have plans for our police department, which will be unveiled in just a few minutes. Um, we have so many things going on right now. It is sort of difficult to keep up with at all. Um, but we're doing that, we're progressing as a city, and we're being able to do that because we have, uh, a very able administration led by our new city administrator and by a city council who, um, has shown incredible unity. We had a workshop since the time of our last meeting, and all except one city council member attended. And we were able to learn about each of our roles, uh, within our city government. And, uh, it was a joy speaking with our representative from the Municipal Association to, uh, to be able to show just how united, uh, our city council is. That, that's a blessing. Um, so it's with that, uh, all for one and one for all spirit that, um, I really want to say thank you to members of the city council and to our leadership in the city, um, to all those who will become part of our team and who have become part of our team, and, uh, for the citizens that have offered their support. There's much left to do. Yes, we have a, uh, grocery store that we're working hard on bringing to the west side. But, um, with those things said, uh, it's exciting to be able to report on the next phase of growth in the city, and that brings us to the next, um, item on the agenda. Um, which would be, um, a time for public comment and then recognitions and commendations and infrastructure update. Uh, Mr. Administrator, do we have anybody sign up? Alright. If we have no public comment, then I will take us to, uh, recognition and commendation, um. If I could put him on the spot, um. Mr. Administrator, would you mind saying a word about, uh, Chief Hughes?
Our fire department's in a really good place. We have, um, two very, um, almost modern fire department buildings that Bill Hughes was integral in, um, in constructing. We have an ISO rating that is, um, top notch within the state. Um, you have Bill, he leaves a great legacy here at Lawrence, and, um, you know, wishing the best in his future endeavors, but he has, he's definitely left, uh, the city in a, in a great place. So I appreciate you, Bill.
Uh, members of council, uh, would you like to express any thoughts on Chief Hughes?
Yes, I would. I've been knowing Bill since I've been on council, he was a fireman, very good. He worked closely with Bootsie, who was before him, and bring back memories very much. And when Bootsie passed on, he, he filled those shoes, and, and he did a very good job as being a chief fireman. And we really going to miss him. I told my niece today, and she told me to tell him, he can't go anyplace, he got to stay here. So, uh, that's what type of person Bill is, very, uh, community minded. And, uh, he lent a helping hand wherever he could, uh, and Bill was genuine. He's a genuine love person, and we are going to miss him, and I hope and pray that we get another Bill and Bootsie.
Yeah, I'd just like to, well, what else can you say than what Mr. Miller said? But, uh, but, uh, I know I can say that anytime I went to Bill and talked to him about anything, he was willing to help me, uh, and, uh, cause I've had people, uh, need stuff, and I would call Bill, and he would, he, he's put, uh, smoke detectors and, uh, smoke alarms in a lot of homes for the past several years, that they started doing that. And, uh, of course, he's always invited me to his state dinners, and I, and I took him up on the tour. But, you know, Bill has meant a lot to me, and I, like Mr. Miller, I've, I've known him before he made chief, and I've worked with Bootsie, and one before him, Leon Davis, and so, so I've, uh, worked with him as chief, and, uh, and all of them been good. But Billy Guy is where we are today. He has really brought the, uh, fire department up to an ISO one rating, and, uh, it's, he'll take a, a lot of work for, for whoever, Nick Chu, if he's to be in that position, because that, that is something to be very proud of. And he worked hard for that, with his, with his firemen, so, uh, I'm gonna miss Bill, but, uh, he's a good friend of mine, and so, uh, and I appreciate it, and I wish him luck in his future endeavors.
I'd like to say too, I've only known Bill for twelve years, and he is a, a great man, and he's humble. And he always would do the thing, I've asked him to do little things in the community, he, he did it. And he, he, like you say, the, uh, uh, fire alarms, he gave everybody on my side the problem. They come in and put them up, come into your house and put them up for you. They didn't just bring them and lay them down, but that was one thing that's really nice of him to do. And I know a lot of the ladies on my street, they told me to tell him thank you for what they, people done for them in their home. But I've known him this period of time, and he has been really a good man and a good friend.
Okay, well, I, I think most everything has been said, but I mean, thirty-seven years is a long time. Worked for, worked in one place, but, um, Bill was definitely the, the definition of a public servant. If you looked up what a public servant's supposed to do, it's Bill Hughes, um, he had to act a job in our city. And, uh, what he did, uh, separating the fire department, getting us to the ISO rating, building the news, squeezing a dollar. I've never seen a guy that could squeeze a dollar like he could. Uh, I mean, his budgets were just unbelievable, and that's a real pleasure to know that he was using taxpayer money to, I mean, just as efficiently as, as possible. I always look to him and think, you know, this is a guy who, who gets, he gets everything out of what's given to him, and he does a heck of a job, so, I mean, what we've gotten out of, out of Bill and what he's done at the department is just phenomenal, so we're gonna miss.
Uh, Counselor, I, I have said that, uh, in many ways, uh, Chief Hughes is a mayor's dream because he's, he is the guy that finds a way to squeeze a dollar out of a dime. And, uh, but a- as the son of, uh, a fireman, um, perhaps I, I came into the shop a little bit more comfort level, um, with the fire department than other departments, because I grew up going around the fire departments. Um, it is unheard of for a city of our size to have a Class One ISO rating. Um, my understanding is that we are the smallest city in the state to have that rating. Um, he is an impressive guy, and, uh, as Counselor Lattimore said, a truly humble gentleman, and, um, does it because he is proud of the work he does, not for the recognition. And, uh, hopefully, we can show him a little recognition anyway, because he certainly deserve. Alrighty, um, well, with that, we move on to, um, an infrastructure update. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Barry Agnew from Ademptus Architecture, uh, Architects, to give us a report from his work on our new municipal complex.
Good afternoon. I am Barry Agnew, CEO of Ademptus Architecture and Associated Consultants in Greenville, South Carolina. We are an architectural, engineering, design, master planning, and interior design firm. We, uh, are a regional and semi-national firm, having worked in eighteen states in the last ten years. So we, we move around, but obviously, my love is right here to work at home in South Carolina and the upstate, uh, being in Greenville, South Carolina. We were selected for the renovations and additions to the building that's commonly called Echo, which is the police building, and it has judicial functions in it as well, the courtroom is there as well. And in April, signed a contract on May the third and began work. When we answered the RFP, or Request for Proposals, we were not overly sure what the scope of work would be. We knew that there was a good bit, some renovation involved of bringing the police facilities up to current, the standards they needed to be. We knew that the judicial, uh, area needed work, and we knew that there were going to be additions to this structure as well. And the program that, that we initially responded to was a program in which we would add roughly ten thousand square feet to the existing facility. The existing facility is a little over twelve thousand, almost thirteen thousand square feet. And we knew that we were gonna add so much space for the police department and so much space for courtrooms. When we analyzed the building, there were no existing additions, drawings of the building, so we had to do an analysis of the building once we were hired, and we found out that the police department was utilizing about sixty-five to seventy percent of the building, and, uh, about thirty-five percent of the building was unusable. Uh, large portions of the building had no heating and air conditioning. There were a lot of things about the building that rendered it not suitable. Of course, it was adaptively reused. At one time, it was a fire station, it had a fire bay, it had a lot of rooms in it that were not as appropriate for police functions and judicial functions as, as were required. In the meantime, we realized that the police department was ha- was split up and was housed in, in, in the bank building that Truist Bank's on the lower level of. They occupy eleven thousand eight hundred square feet of the second story of that particular building. So here we, we're, we're looking at a program of what the police needs are. We worked closely with the police chief and a number of the captains in the police department to try to determine what the police department really needed in a programming phase that we started on in May. It was determined that if we moved the people from the bank building to this facility, they're, they're currently housed in eleven thousand eight hundred square feet, that we could make some consolidations and savings in square footage and not have to replicate that much new square footage. On the other hand, we realized that we had space in the existing building that was currently being unused, and we needed to utilize that space to its fullest potential. So we went into a study and we determined how to use the available budget, whatever that may be, to its best potential by reutilizing as much of the existing building as possible and renovating. You can renovate a buil- existing building for far less money than you can build a new building. So obviously, we wanted to utilize the existing building to its fullest potential. But working, uh, closely with the police chief and the captains, we determined that they did not need eleven thousand eight hundred square feet of space, plus the roughly, uh, eight thousand square feet of space that they were utilizing in the twelve thousand square foot building, that we could consolidate spaces and be more effective in their utilization. And we realized that we could renovate the entire building re- instead of building as much addition. So the program changed at that time so that we could be more cost effective. The program i- originally was to build ten thousand plus square feet of new building and renovate a portion of the old building. And we decided that through our, our studies, we, we could renovate the entire old building and only add between four and five thousand square feet, add half as much new building, but renovate more of the older building. Utilize the four to five, four thousand plus square feet of the old building that wasn't currently being used. We could utilize that, and then we wouldn't have to add the ten thousand plus square foot. So the program evolved into more of a renovation and lesser of an addition. Although, there is proposed two main additions to this building. One is a new wing to house the police department, uh, functions that are currently on the second floor of the bank building. Those offices had to be included in this addition. And that brings us to a, a new addition of, of between four and five thousand square feet. Then also, we realized that we could, instead of building a whole new courtroom, we could take the existing courtroom and enlarge that courtroom by blowing out the front of the building and expanding out the front of the building, and make the courtroom larger so that you could have jury trials and have all the functions necessary with jury rooms and, and all the other supports, spaces that go with the courtroom, so that you will not have to use the county building for jury trials. And that was a lot more cost effective than building a whole new courtroom wing. So the, the program evolved into more renovation and less addition. So that's where we stand at this time. We worked closely, the mayor was highly involved, city administrator's highly involved, police chief worked tirelessly with us during this phase, and a number of the captains and officials in that department, to help us understand their needs and how to put together a police department that had everything they needed in it. That also frees up that other, the other building for you to have, for the, the city to use for whatever functions they see in the future, and, and, uh, and it consolidates the police and judicial in one, one facility. And that should decrease drastically your, uh, ongoing ca- monthly cost for cons- by consolidating those departments, the, the, uh, monthly maintenance and utilities bills and all of that should really be a lot better because of the consolidation. So with that said and done, I'm gonna show you the schematic design phase of that project and where it stands now. Finally, there, one other statement I'll make before we get into reviewing drawings is, it became very important to us that the city of Lawrence has a fabric, uh, uh, an architectural fabric. What's appropriate in Atlanta or Charlotte is not the same thing that would wo- work well in downtown Lawrence. We need to consider the appeal of the downtown and design a building that would blend harmoniously with the downtown while still giving a facelift to the building and a new look for the future. But at the same time, it needs to blend well with the architectural charm of Lawrence, South Carolina. And that's, that's our goal, so I hope we've achieved that, and I'll show you what we've done. And I'm gonna do so by pointing to some, some, uh, drawings that are over here. And then after the meeting's over, these drawings will be left here on display, and you're invited to come up and look at them real closely, because probably from your seats, you won't be able to see every little detail. I think I speak loud enough that you can hear me without the mic, so I'm gonna stand in view from the drawing. This is a site plan showing West Lawrence Street and Church Street. The existing building here, twelve thousand seven hundred eighty-eight square feet, is showing the tan color. The new addition is showing the darker gray color right here, and this addition is four thousand six hundred thirty-six square feet. We have some minor additions here and here. Now, one of the issues with the building, before we get inside the building, was you have two functions in the same building. You have a police department, you have the judicial department, okay? And we were having everybody, everyone parked in the back and having the traffic through the entire police department just to get to court, okay? It wasn't set up where the public could come to trial, and the judicial department could work independently of the police department and vice versa. So one of the goals of the project was to have separate entrances, having the building to be integrable, but have a public entrance for the judicial functions and to have a separate entrance for the police department. This is showing that, and also shows additional new parking across the front for the judicial, so that people can come to court and enter the front and not have to go through the entire building, and a public little plaza area, so that when you have council meetings, a meeting like this in that facility, uh, you can adjourn and go outside to the courtyard area. And there are monuments that are there, the existing flag halls and the, and some of the existing monuments that are being retained that have to do with the history and culture of Lawrence. So this is the site plan showing that the total facility will now be plus or minus seventeen thousand square feet, going from a twelve thousand seven hundred eighty-eight square foot facility to a seventeen thousand square foot. I'm gonna move over here and put this around next. This is a proposed floor plan of the building. And the colors are just tied to this chart here that show you the, the departments. But basically, the police department is this area, and they have the, the large bay that is unheated and air conditioned to them, that used to be where the fire trucks would be, has been converted into the police training room, the, the large room that where people come for training, and large assemblies are in there. And then the physical training or gymnasium that's there has been moved over here to this area. And the courtroom has been expanded out the front, it's twice the size, more than twice the size that it is now. And it has the judges' chambers, the parking court, the jury room, and a workroom, and the city attorneys. All of that are tied into this judicial area. And that gives a, a, an area for the public to enter from the front and to go to court functions and is believed by this area. This area on, th- this is the new addition on this side, the, the police addition, where we have a series of rooms with the captain's office, the police chief's office, the records room, the investigators, the, the records clerks, and all of that is located in this area. Also, the building was efficient without having adequate public toilets and that kind of thing. So we have a new large public toilet here and a new large public toilet here off the two assembly rooms. And then we have renovated the rest of the space in the entire building, and there's a new covered entrance to the police department that's clearly with signage and with exterior structure identifying police entrance, and the same thing from the, from the judicial. There is an existing fountain that's over here that everybody should be aware of, and we're trying to tie to that by creating a new courtyard connecting to the fountain so that people can come and appreciate the fountain and have, utilize that so it's not just sitting in the yard having nothing to do with the rest of the facility. Then we have decided to design the building in such a manner that it changes the appearance of the building. This view up at the front is the total front view of the building, showing the, the flags in front and the monuments that exist, the, a large pronounced public entrance into the courtroom area and the facelift to the rest of the building, picking up on some of the architectural elements that we see in downtown Lawrence, so that it's tied into the architecture of the city. There's some other views that are close up to the exterior plaza area and the entrance from there. And this is basically the character studies of what the building will look like. So I'm gonna stop that presentation now and tell you a little bit about the projected timeframe and about where this will go from here. The con- the, the project is in the middle of construction document preparation phase at this time. That means the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural, civil, all the engineers are working on producing all the drawings necessary to build the, the construction, the blueprints, if you, if you want to term it that way, that are necessary for contractors to bid on the project, code officials to approve and permit the project, and for subsequent construction to occur. The drawings are scheduled to be one hundred percent completed in review process with all the different parties by the middle of July, okay? So if that's three weeks from now, all the drawings will be completed. Then after the city approves the drawings, the drawings will then go out for public bid. As you know, it's taxpayers' money, so it's a bid project, so the project will go out for bid for the month of August. Basically, a thirty-day bid period in simultaneous to that, the- the code officials will be reviewing the drawings and making the documents permit ready. Assuming that bids are received, and we've had quite a bit of interest already, we've got contractors calling our office wanting to know when is this coming out. So I really think you're going to have a good bid response, is my opinion. And the more contractors that bid it, the more people that are interested in it, the better price you should get for the facility. So nevertheless, the project will be bid there in August. Toward the end of August, we'll have an apparent low bidder. The city can enter into negotiations with the low bidder, and hopefully, a contract could be struck with the low bidder, and construction could start as soon as September. Projected construction time is eight months to a year maximum. Depending on, I mean, there's a lot of issues that are unknown at this time that have to do with how fast the city would approve a contract and when the contractor would start, that kind of thing. And we don't know who the contractor is. You know, the larger contractors that bid it will have a larger workforce and be able to complete the work more expediently, but at a higher overhead. The smaller contractors that bid the project will take longer to construct it, but at a better theoretical, better price for the lower overhead. And you want to find someone that's, hopefully, the contractor that ends up, you end up selecting will be somewhere in the middle of that, be large enough to do the work well and expediently so that you can get in and occupy the building, but at a cost that would be suitable to the city. We have done everything we can during the design phase, working with all these other parties that we're talking about, to find the most cost effective construction that we can. Renovations are difficult jobs. You don't know what you're going to find inside a wall until you tear into the wall. And we know that there are a number of deficiencies in this building. But the building is structurally sound, and the building can be utilized. It really does lend itself to this function, and we can use every square inch of the building. And we can do that much more cost effectively than we could have built a whole new facility. Four thousand square feet of new space costs a lot less than ten thousand square feet of new space. And our attitude has been to try to be good stewards of the money the city of Lawrence spends, so that you will get the most facility for the dollar spent. That's been the mantra that we've repeated throughout this process, and I hope we've achieved that. If the project, for instance, comes in over budget, we'll work diligently with your team and the contractors to value engineer the structure, to bring it into an appropriate budget. But we're guardedly optimistic at this time, because we've had quite a bit of interest in the project from contractors. And we're, we have a lot of work right now in multiple states. And even though construction costs, as you well know, have gone up a lot recently, and the times are volatile, I hate to, I'm going to knock on wood when I say that, but very recently, we've seen some downturn in some construction costs. Modest, but we've seen some, 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 there are issues like we, last year couldn't get steel, bar joists and steel were unavailable, now they are. We're seeing delivery times ease up a little bit, not a lot. But I'm guardedly optimistic that at the time in which this building will be constructed in the third and fourth quarter of this year, as we move forward, that we should see some better situation than we have right now. I'll stop at this point, open the podium to questions if you have any, and be glad to answer any questions you have about the process, the schedule, the provision, or anything else concerning this project.
Thank you, Mr. Agnew, counsel.
What's the budget? Budget? What budget? What I say for that, we have a number of different budgets, depends on what you include. If you want the hard numbers of construction cost, you know, we were looking at somewhere in the range of two point four million for seventeen thousand square feet. But that has a variance, you know, you're talking somewhere around a little over two hundred dollars a square foot for new construction, eighty-five dollars a square foot or so for renovating space. But of course, it's hard, you asked me to give you a construction number. I could give you an easier number if you were building a whole new building. Renovation's more difficult because it's labor intensive. The issue here is there's much more money and labor in renovating than there is materials. So that has, is highly dependent on the contractor that gets the project. We've seen projects come in with lower numbers than that on construction cost, and we see some higher. This is not a monument type building. We're not seeing the super high construction cost associated with marble floors and that kind of thing. You know, this is a cost effective type of construction. But all I can tell you, I can't guarantee you any budget in this volatile climate that we're in today. You know as well as I do that contractors are telling you prices are changing daily as we sit there right, I sit there right now. So I don't know what the third quarter's going to be like this year. But I can tell you that the building has been designed in the most cost effective manner that we know how to design it. We're trying to reutilize, I mean, we're even looking at repurposing this station that you're sitting at, modifying it to fit in the new building. We're trying to take pews from the county building and reutilize existing pieces where we can. We're doing everything we can to be budget conscious. That said, it's seventeen thousand square feet of construction.
So that would be one of the features of this. It would allow us to have a little bit more public friendly access to council chambers.
So the same going to be down there too?
That is an option.
Your presentation's very good. And I'm impressed with the idea of you trying to keep everything all close to the building. And it looks good. And I'm glad to see images from Long Street. But I'm concerned that Martin, and I do know, like you were saying, no heat going outside of the building, so I know that we in process of building a building and costs is up, cost of materials is up. So yes, we, I'm impressed with your presentation.
All we can do is be in it with you. In other words, if it comes in over budget, we're willing to roll up our sleeves and get around the table and make modifications and changes to bring it into whatever budget you have. The budget, like we said, we don't know what the cost is going to be, because it's been changing so much over the past year, and we don't know who the contractor will be, and so we can't tell you their labor rates. But that said and done, when we were hired to do this job, I basically told the selection committee, we're not here to give you a set of drawings that you pay us for and you sit in the corner. We're here to help you get into the facility, whatever it takes. And that might mean that we have to do a good bit more work. I don't know that, I certainly am optimistic at this time. But what I want to assure this council is that we're here for you, and we will help you work with the contractors. And there's fancy words for that, they call it nowadays, value engineering, modifying things that we have to to get it in budget based on your priorities. But in the end, the cost of a piece of sheet rock is the cost of a piece of sheet rock. The cost of a new air conditioning unit is the cost of a new air conditioning unit. And so we just have to decide, or you have to decide, based on available funds at the time, how much of this work you can do. We have not been extravagant with anything in this facility. That's what I want to assure you of. It's cost effective design, it's just a question of how many square feet it is that you're going to be working on, and can you afford that much work?
Mr. Agnew, I might add to that. One, thank you very much for your hard work on this. Mr. Agnew is a very respected architect, and whereas other firms might have sort of farmed this out to a junior associate, he's sort of taken us under his wing, and I appreciate that. Care and attention that you shine to this pet project.
Yeah, they call it my pet project. I don't know why, but for some reason, I decided that I was going to have a heavier hand in this one. I get to choose, I'm the CEO of the corporation, and we are very busy, have a whole lot of work right now. But I've taken this under my wing as my personal pet project. So fortunately, or unfortunately for you, whichever, every time there's a meeting, I'm the guy that's going to the meeting. Now, that said, there's about thirty architects and engineers that are involved in this project, working under my guidance. That includes all the engineering teams as well, but I'm personally leading the project. And I'll be here to the very end. Like he says, it's not going to be passed down to a junior member of our firm. I've decided to be the principal architect in charge of this particular project.
One thing I'll point out to council about this plan, well, a couple of things. The funds that will complete this project are funds that the city of Lawrence received from the American Rescue Plan. That's what council has discussed. And so we should see this very much needed update to the city's facilities, long overdue update to the city's facilities. And we won't be coming out of our general funds budget to get it done, which is a tremendous thing for us. Since we have those one-time funds, I appreciate council's foresight and wisdom in trying to spend it on needs like this. The other thing you'll see is not just that we focused on renovation rather than massive expansion, but to the right of the building on the site plan, there's still plenty of green space on the site. And so part of paring down the project means to keep it within our budget. Maybe we don't build as big as we'd like to, we don't overbuild for what our needs are twenty-five years down the road. But we can certainly reduce the city's operating costs on an ongoing basis by consolidating facilities and building a facility that is more than sufficient for where we are today, with room to grow. So we try to be as conservative as we possibly could at every turn here. I really appreciate you keeping an eye on the bottom line for us.
There's a lot of work left to be done. Like we said, we don't know the cost of the bid, it hasn't been bid yet. We don't know what the bidding climate will be like in August and September. All I can tell you is that we've striven at every step to be cost effective and that we will work diligently with you and your contractors to do anything we can to reduce the cost of the building within the purview that you would like us to do. In other words, if you want less space renovated, that's your call, not mine. I'm showing you how to do what you need to take the police department from its location now and relocate it here and give everybody the space that they need. We're very fortunate that this building did lend itself readily to renovation. In other words, the size of, we tried to, I mean, you wouldn't believe how hard we've worked to keep as many of the interior walls as possible. There are masonry walls in the middle of the building rather than sheet rock walls. And so sometimes someone's office got eight inches smaller because we recommended to keep the existing wall rather than move it and build a new wall. So we worked diligently to try to keep as much of the the structure of the existing building intact solely to be cost effective. That's been our focus. And I don't know, I mean, I don't know how else we could save a penny on the, on that part of the project. Obviously, you can save money on finishes and that kind of thing, but you're going to have to, if you're going to utilize the building, put in heating and air conditioning and those kind of things. The building is fortunate that it has lent itself to being able to build without putting in a fire suppression system. And that was, we barely made it under the size of the code allowance for that with the additions and the type, building construction typology, because the cost of putting in a fire suppression system would have been extensive. But it's primarily non-combustible construction, if you want to feel better about it. Masonry walls don't burn like stud framed walls. But nevertheless, we've been fortunate that we've had a number of things happen that have allowed us to be as cost effective as we can be.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Agnew, we really appreciate your presentation. All right, that moves us on to the council business before us tonight. First item on council business's agenda is the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda as a
Second motion?
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of consent agenda, please indicate saying aye. Any opposed, no. And the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to old business for council, we have second reading of ordinance five dash twenty-two dash oh one, which is this year's budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, which received first reading at our last meeting. Counsel, all those counselors here and Ms. Campbell were present at our budget workshop and worked together to put together this budget, which brings us over eight million dollars annually for the first time in the city's history, with no tax increase. Just say that one more time for the newspaper. Did you get that? All right. All righty, do I hear a motion concerning the budget?
I make the motion. Go on. I make the motion that we receive this five two two oh one ordinance for our budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of budget on second reading, please indicate saying aye. Any opposed, no. And the budget is approved. Thank you very much, counsel. Next, we have second reading of ordinance five dash twenty-two dash oh two, which is a hundred percent annexation ordinance for seven eighty-five East Main Street. That closes Donal Hall out on East Main next to the cemetery and Arby's, and allows for construction of a new dental office in that area. Do I hear a motion concerning this ordinance?
I make a motion, we approve second reading on five dash twenty-two, both two.
Thank you, Counselor Bolt, do we have a second? Second from Counselor Lowery, just under the wire, maybe just a little bit louder. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of passage of ordinance five dash twenty-two dash oh two on second reading, please indicate saying aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, the measure's passing in slowly. All right, that takes us to new business, which is resolution twenty-two dash oh six dash oh one. This is a particularly poignant motion for me. Because while I served as attorney, I also, or while I served as mayor, I also worked as an attorney. And so maybe I see behind the curtain a little bit more than the average citizen might about what is involved in serving a city attorney. And it is our honor and privilege to recognize Mr. Thomas J. Thompson and his, upon his retirement from the city in his position as city attorney. The resolution, which I will read, says, resolution of appreciation, retirement of Thomas J. Thompson, City Attorney. Whereas Mr. Thompson began his tenure as City Attorney for the city of Lawrence in January nineteen ninety-two. And whereas Mr. Thompson has provided the city of Lawrence and its council with sound legal advice during innumerable city council meetings for more than thirty years. And whereas Mr. Thompson has been instrumental in negotiating and drafting a multitude of written agreements, leases, ordinances, and resolutions on behalf of the city of Lawrence, which have contributed to its progress, economic development, and the protection of its interests. And whereas Mr. Thompson has prosecuted those charged with violating the laws of the city of Lawrence, thus leading to convictions, which have upheld the rule of law and respect for peace and order within our community. And whereas Mr. Thompson has effectively, successfully guided the city of Lawrence through litigation during his tenure, ably demonstrating his ability to creatively resolve disputes. Whereas Mr. Thompson is valued as a learned member Whereas Mr. Thompson is a va- is valued as a learned member of the Lawrence County Bar, a respected colleague of those working to pursue justice, and a friend who has generously given of his time to assist those in need. And whereas Mr. Thompson will be retire- retiring from his position as city attorney for the City of Lawrence on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, and will be genuinely missed. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Lawrence expresses its profound gratitude and appreciation to Mr. Thomas J. Thompson for his more than thirty years of wise counsel and advice to the City of Lawrence, and wishes him only the best for his future endeavors. I present this resolution to council for a vote. I ask that you approve it, and I will now entertain a motion and a second to begin any discussion on this resolution.
I make a motion that we accept this resolution as you have adequately read.
We have, we have a motion and a multitude of seconds. Um, so, uh, any counselor who would like to, uh, express their thoughts and have some discussion on this, please do so now. Ms. Miller.
Mr. Thompson, Attorney Thompson, it's been a long journey. And with your expertise, your guidance, everything you have done for us, we really appreciate. You're brilliant attorney and very strive for perfection. I, I can't say that, you're one that really strive for perfection, and I love that about you. I tell anybody, he is one that strive very hard to make sure that everything is right and that we do not get sued, uh, anything on your resolution. And I'm gonna make it short, I really appreciate you. It was nice working with you down through these years, and, uh, may God continue to give you health and strength throughout your life. Thank you.
Well, I too, I'd like to echo Ms. Miller. So, I feel I've enjoyed, um, all these years. I was on the city council when we, when we chose him to be our attorney, and I've enjoyed working with him all these years. He's been, uh, a great asset to the city, not only to the city as city attorney, but, uh, launch all, all topics, not just, not just the city of Lawrence at all. I worked with him on, he had helped me out a lot when, when we started that museum. I've never, never helped a guy in that, so I really appreciate what he has, has done and he personally, uh, and I was involved with that. And he had helped other people too, throughout this. And, um, I've never had anything of good respect for him, and I've always heard good respect from him. Tommy, I thank you, and I appreciate what you've done. I thought I had your name on my little prayer, but I let you go, but I do, uh, to protect you and picking you and, and others, whatever you do.
Well, Tom, I can't say, it's, it's similar to, I, I can't say enough, it's similar to, to what I said about Bill Hughes. You know, you've got a great public servant, and it is, uh, that's, there's a lot to be said for that. Um, and you, I, I, I think we all know here, sitting on council, with all the discussions we've had over the years, that we know you truly love Lawrence and you love this council, you love, uh, what you've done. Uh, you couldn't do it all these years, uh, without some love in your heart for, for all that you do here and all we try to do to better the city. And, uh, I think because you have been part of our group here, you have definitely helped this city to become better. And we are greatly appreciative of what you've done.
And I'd like to say I've only known you for twelve years, I think. Yeah, and I appreciate you being here too, guiding us, because we do have questions, but how we should do this, or how we should do that. And you just direct us right then, and I appreciate that. You always stand up for us, and you bring things that we not, we don't know, I've seen. And you say, "I think we should do such and such a thing." You turn us around to do the right thing, and I, I appreciate you for that. Thank you.
Yeah, South Carolina lawyer going to, uh, North Carolina, he paid one time. And every time he stood up, the judge said, "Sit down." He'd stand up again, "Sit down." Of course, North Carolina is different, you don't stand up when you address the court, you have to stay seated. So they finally got that squared away, but that's why I always feel a little bit better standing up because I'm, I'm used to that. Um, the mayor's remarks were exceptionally kind and gracious. I thank you very much for that. And of course, they were embodied in the resolution. I didn't quite re- uh, realize that there would be a resolution. Um, while I appreciate everyone's attendance, more importantly, I thank you for your many years of support. You allowed and made it possible for me to be a public servant, which on reflection is clearly an intangible gift. You can't weigh it on a scale, you can't measure it with tape. You can't put it in a box and wrap it up with pretty paper and paper boats. Public service, um, gives me and those who practice it an inward feeling that that old adage, "It is better to give than to receive," is true. Experienced gain in the field of public service is somewhat similar to your formal education that you learn in a school. And that simply means that it can't be taken away from you, you have it forever. So while you honor me here tonight and recognize my time as city attorney, I likewise honor you, patrician, to those of you who gave me the opportunity to serve.
Mr. Thompson, um, you can't help but sit in the mayor's chair and feel intimidated by the task. You have made that task so much easier because there's confidence in the work that you have done for the city. As an attorney, I want to honor you for your respected position within the bar, and that is a, a respect that has been truly earned, not just with years, but with expertise and skill. Just this past week, uh, Mr. Thompson delivered an address, um, where we were dedicating a memorial highway. And I was struck as he was giving it by his skill as an orator. And though you were there as a friend of the Beasley family and, and someone who had known Mr. C.D. Beasley, you were also wearing the mantle of city attorney for the City of Lawrence. And I was terribly proud at the way you conducted yourself and the way you represented the city in that ceremony. And then I was further struck after that ceremony by the way that the community and the members of that family embraced you and insisted that you be in just about every single picture they took of you. You are beloved and respected. And I think for attorneys, there's not any greater honor than the thanks of a client who has said, "Job well done." Thank you. At this time, I would like to, uh, call for a vote on the resolution. All those in favor of passage, resolution twenty-two dash oh-six dash oh-one, please indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That resolution is passed unanimously, I somewhat suspected that that might be the case. And so at this time, I would like to present Mr. Thompson with a ceremonial copy of this resolution. Mr. Thompson ain't quite done with this. We, we appreciate your willingness to continue to, uh, work with us and ensure a, uh, an orderly and, and, uh, smooth transition, uh, to our, uh, to work with our next city attorney, Ms. Jean-Marc Pahn. Um, but tonight is your night, and we all honor you, thank you. That brings us to the end of our agenda for tonight.
I, I would like to make a motion that, uh, John.
Before we have a second on that motion, uh, Ms. Lattimore has a comment.
I'd like to say, uh, Mr. Thompson, Attorney Thompson, that, that speech you made at Beasley's, would you put it in a frame or something so we all can have it somewhere to look at and read? Appreciate that, thank you, it was very good. It was very good.
I heard it was very, um, thank you, it took you off.
All right, uh, Ms. Miller, you had a motion, is there a second? All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjournment, please indicate saying aye. Any opposed, no. We are adjourned.
You'll be around.